Welcome to this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. This meeting is held in the Jackson County Courthouse Auditorium at 10 South Oakdale in Medford. This meeting is held every Wednesday morning at 9:30, as long as a quorum of two commissioners is available to conduct the business of Jackson County. Your Jackson County Commissioners broadcast this meeting over Rogue Valley Television, and it's available for streaming and review at jacksoncountyor.gov. Under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming. The types of business that occur at this meeting include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. Agendas of the meetings are posted on the Commissioners Bulletin Board and released on the county's website and through local media in the time required for public notice. Many of the conclusions on the business presented to the Board of Commissioners have been discussed in detail and prepared by the Administrative Office and staff prior to consideration at this meeting and the official vote. These prior discussions also have been properly noticed and the work done in a transparent manner. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings or watch online at jacksoncountyor.gov. And now, your Jackson County Commissioners, Rick Dyer, Colleen Roberts, and Randy Sparassino, working for you.
Well, good morning. It's 9:30, and I'll call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for December 10th, 2025. We're in the courthouse auditorium, and we're also on Zoom as well. And we'll begin our meeting with Pledge of Allegiance if you stand and join us.
(Inaudible)
Joyce is back. Well, we're going to start our meeting with a special presentation. And before I came on the board years ago, the Presiding Chair of the Board of Commissioners was given the honor of selecting a recipient for the Annual Chairman's Award. This honor recognizes a local resident or residence whose lifetime achievements have gone above and beyond the usual responsibilities of good citizenship in making a profound difference in the people's lives in Jackson County. As the 2025 Chair, I'm honored to present the 15th Annual Chairman's Award to Mr. Bill Meyer for his work in the field of community outreach. And we just want to recognize him. We'll meet him at the podium. Well, thank you all. Thank you all for coming. I'm not sure our comments this morning is going to top you guys. So I'll give a little brief history, and then we've got why I chose Mr. Bill Meyer for my Chairman's Award and integrated with many of your guys' comments that you've been sending to me over the months. So we have quite a compilation, and you'll probably have an opportunity to add to that too today. So in 2001, Bill started on the radio in Medford on KMED. He built an impressive career as a DJ in several top markets across the country before arriving here and embracing talk radio for the first time. From day one, he brought an extraordinary ability to read, absorb, understand, and thoughtfully discuss complex topics. His commitment is unmatched, working 10 to 12 hours a day to produce a compelling three-hour weekday radio show while programming the station and managing the engineering responsibilities. While Bill holds his own political views, one of his core principles is to always be respectful, welcoming differing opinions while steering clear of shout radio. That is a key reason why thousands of listeners tune in across Southern Oregon and around the world via streaming and podcasts. Bill has interviewed everyone from former vice presidents to bestselling authors and national news anchors, and many of them return to his show, often telling him that he is one of the best interviewers they've ever worked with. Bill's unwavering goal has always been to deliver a high-quality program and elevate the overall standard of content across the radio station. And I made note that recently, Bill conducting amazing notable interviews with Bret Baer, Harmit Dylan, that was an interesting interview, John Lott, and longstanding Friday guest, Rick Manning. He creating an incredible connection from Jackson County to Washington, DC. Ms. Lynn Barton, who strongly supports a Bill Meyer show, stated to me, quote, "There's nothing anywhere like Bill Meyer's morning talk show. Daily interviews on an astonishing variety of topics serve up equal parts of education and inspiration, interspersed with call-in segments where all are welcomed. Unfailingly polite and genuinely curious, Bill is upfront about his conservative convictions, but he sincerely tries to understand the reasons people hold views he may disagree with, and he gives them a platform to explain." The thing I appreciate most about Bill may be his love of the Rogue Valley and commitment to our community, and that is the Community Outreach Award he's getting today. A major part of Bill's mission is to give back to the community. He regularly volunteers to host local events, whether for nonprofits, civic causes, or political gatherings. He has organized food drives and even auctioned off some of his antique radios for charity. When asked about her experiences collaborating with volunteer events, Ms. Darcy Manself, which was a former Chairman's Award, said, quote, "Bill cares for our community, and he's always been dedicated to support local activities. His support fosters a sense of community, bringing people together to make memorable experiences for attendees. His efforts inspire others to step up to the plate and make a difference. Bill has always been a strong supporter of the Pear Blossom Festival, and he understands the level of commitment it takes to keep traditions alive in our community," end quote. Bill is not afraid to take a stand and support the local community, no matter how much heat it may often draw. People know they can call him, share a story of injustice, and if it holds merit, there's a good chance that Bill will bring it to light on air and try to help highlight the issue. Mr. Kevin Gill, owner of Klauser Drilling, and he said he couldn't be here today, but he said, "I have sent Bill some complex information about water issues, and I'm always impressed by how quickly he understands what is happening and what we may be able to do in the future. He's not bashful to roll up his sleeves and help causes that are important," end quote. Bill is an important and valuable asset to the entire Rogue Valley and has provided a local news source not found elsewhere, while getting critical information to people near and far. And Mr. Kevin Sterrett, Executive Director of Oregon Firearms Federation, added his information with some comical things, which I'll just give you copies of all these emails I received. But his nugget of greatness, he said, "It's been my distinct pleasure to have known and become friends with a media figure who respects his guests, does his homework, speaks the truth, and demonstrates that all too rare quality, common sense." We're hearing that in a lot of the communications. Almost done here. But it's just the tip of the iceberg. I don't think we'll ever dig into the value Bill is to our community, but it does highlight some of the main comments people have brought forward and that I've seen over the years. What many do not realize is that Bill has quietly visited hospitals to support ill or dying callers, offering a kind word or simply holding a hand to say goodbye. He is dedicated, compassionate, and deeply committed to this community, the voice and the glue that helps hold us together. Though they were unable to attend today's presentation, Senators Dennis and Diane Lytham extend their heartfelt congratulations on Bill's well-deserved recognition as the recipient of the 2025 Chairman's Award and shared this message to Bill about the award. They said, "This award is a testament to your unwavering commitment and significant contributions to upholding and advancing the principles of free speech in our community. Your efforts in advocating for the cause of liberty and your commitment to intellectual freedom and open inquiry truly set a high standard and continue to make a profound impact. The value of the work you do for Southern Oregon cannot be overstated, and this honor is richly deserved," end quote. Service to this community is a way of life for Bill Meyer, and as the Chair of the Board of Commissioners, I'm honored to present him with the 2025 Chairman's Award for his outstanding work in the field of community outreach. And the community's here outreach back to you.
Well, there's not a lot left to be said. I'll just say that in a time when we've seen local media come and go and ebb and flow, you have been that constant voice, and the voice that is absolutely needed and vital. You've always given information that you can't get on other local media. I mean, the depth of what you dig into a topic, I'm always impressed on how well-versed you are, how much investigation and research you must do, because I know it's difficult in our job. We have to do similar things. But it's also done with humility and with humor, and I think that's great. And it gives people that conduit to local government that they probably lack elsewhere, and that leads to frustration. I think you give a voice to people that they're able to talk and really directly converse with local government officials, and that's important, and we appreciate that. Me personally, I will say, I'm not always up at 6 o'clock. I'm rarely up at 6 o'clock, to be honest with you.
You do that in your sleep?
Yeah. But I listen when I catch it when it's live, but I also always catch the archive version, because it does give me information that I can't get anywhere else. And I think it makes me better at my job, and I appreciate that. So again, the other thing that comes through, and this is rare, we don't have many people. Actually, we have a lot of people in this community, but they don't have the same platform you do. You do care about the community. I know that. That comes across every day, and that's appreciated. And like I say, I think it helps all public officials do their job, and we need all the help we can get. So congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, Bill, what I really appreciate about you is the stuff that goes unseen, the way you care about our community, and you do things in the background that people don't recognize. You're truly a deserved award winner. I really appreciate everything that you do. I appreciate the fact that you keep local issues at the forefront, something that a lot of our local press doesn't do anymore, and it's really important to have an outlet for local issues, and I truly appreciate all that. And speaking like Commissioner Dyer, when I'm on the other side of the microphone talking to you, you truly are a respectful individual, and I truly appreciate that. So thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
So here is what the Chairman's Award says, presented to Bill Meyer for lifetime achievement as a citizen of Jackson County in the field of community outreach. Bill Meyer is hereby acknowledged as Jackson County's esteemed Citizen of the Year for 2025. For everybody who came, apparently. So you will get the final word, but a lot of people came, and I would like to open the microphone for people who want to come up, give their word of support, encouragement for this award, and give you the floor, because Bill Meyer always gives you a voice. I want to give you a voice as well. So come on up, and tell us your name and give us your comments. But face the camera, because this is like on TV.
All righty. Holly Morton from Josephine County. 6 o'clock in our household, bing, the radio goes on, and we've got Bill. We've been doing that as long as we can remember, and as long as he's on air, we will be doing that. Bill is not simply a radio voice. He is a public servant who regularly volunteers for fundraisers and public speaking engagements, this while monitoring and maintaining the aging radio equipment that enables his station. If the equipment goes down, whatever the time, he drops what he's doing, takes off to mountaintops, even in storms, to get the radio back online. Not the usual radio voice fed by talking points of a production staff, he is a man of exceptional depth and breadth of knowledge, an insatiable student who is his own production staff. He puts together every program. His program is always well-researched, again, by himself with very interesting guests. In a world that has grown cynical and insensitive, Bill has maintained a unique blend of kindness, integrity, and core humanity. When we met Bill, we realized that beyond his large hazel eyes and handsome face, he's a man of keen intuition, multifaceted interests, including music, and has a wry and pithy sense of humor. Bill is a loving and devoted husband, a discriminating collector of a vast variety of information, and a loyal friend. When he isn't busy with the radio and community business, he looks after the needs of his elderly mother. It has been a great privilege and honor to know a man of this quality. Thank you, Bill, for having the personal courage to speak with a strong conservative voice in a state where truth and sanity have been circling the drain. You are appreciated every day by tens of thousands of regular listeners across Southern Oregon and hundreds of thousands more via your podcasts across Oregon and the world. As you approach this new era of your career with television and emerging information technologies, we see you as continuing to be a central player in the conservative scene. We wish you good health, friends and callings who will always stand by you, and a lifetime knowing that you have made a significant difference at a critical time in history. Thank you again, Bill, for your dedicated service.
A wry and pithy sense of humor. I think that's why we get along so well. And here's another, John.
Hi. So many friends of mine are calling on a regular basis. One friend said, "He's now submitted over 20 letters to the editors, and not one has ever been published in our local newspaper." But he gets to go on Bill and say whatever he wants, and if Bill disagrees with him or not, it doesn't matter, he has a free voice to speak. So Bill is the only person that allows us to reach the community in a fair and balanced way. So thank you. Without that, let me think about it. If he wasn't on the air, what the hell would be our valley? How could you express your views? There is no other way. He's the only game in town. So thank you.
I'm Paul Sheldon, the Executive Director of The Crest at Willowitt Ranch, which is a children's outdoor nature education program, and I'm also a Senior Advisor to Golden Rule Reentry here in Medford. And Bill, I just want to thank you for being the voice of the community. I don't always agree with what you say. You're a principled person, which I appreciate about you, but like the other Commissioners here, thank you for being a place where people can authentically express how they feel and what they think about the community and being so open to dialogue. It's that phrase, shouting radio. You don't do that. You talk and you listen, and that's a wonderful example to the community and to the state.
You guys are moving this right along. Thank you very much.
Bill, I really want to encourage you, all the way from Curry County, that if you've ever thought about being a talk show host, you would really do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, thank you. Great selection. What you just read there, two and a half pages, is a legacy, a legacy of love for country, a legacy for searching for common sense and logic. And you've just been such a supporter of truth throughout. I've known you for 20 years. You came over to the immediately following the Teco Bar fire, and you for our timber rally and our fire prevention and awareness rally, and just can't thank you enough for what you contributed. Colleen, you were there. We put them both up on top of a flatbed truck. I couldn't think of it there. But thank you, Bill. Keep up the good work, and never back down. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Representative Port Vois from over in Brookings area. I don't know what your district number is.
All the above.
All of them. Number one. We have Senator Brock Smith here, too, from number one.
Welcome, Senator, and Reps. I mean, you've got a heck of a bunch of people here.
High-power audience.
Yeah, you've got a high-power audience here. Brad Bennington here in Medford. And you know, Bill, I mean, really, you kind of represent, in a way, the Board of Commissioners, because you're the guy that does his homework, you're the guy that works on policy without getting political, you're the guy that reaches, you know, local, national. I mean, I happen to be standing next to a Commissioner that's actually giving an address at the White House. I mean, this is the kind of reach and scope our little county has, thanks to people like you. You do the research, you do the homework, you make sure you know your stuff. I mean, the number of dumb questions you've asked, not many that I can think of. I mean, the kind of stuff that you do is really good stuff. Like, when you interviewed Harmit Dylan, I couldn't believe it. I mean, these are national heavy hitters that are willing to come on your program and talk to you and answer questions and respond to your stuff. So all I can tell you is that you really are a wonderful community asset, and I can't think of... I completely agree with the Board of Commissioners here. There isn't anybody that deserves this award more than you do. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Come on in. I will add to what Brad said, because when I was... Come on up, Linda. When I was in Washington, DC, and I'm totally out of my element, and this man came up to me and said, "We have a common friend." And I said, "Okay." And he said to Bill Meyer, and it was Rick Manning. And it did give me a connection from home to Washington, DC. It was really an honor to have met Rick Manning there in person. And this is Mrs. Bill Meyer, my friend Linda.
Well, I get to see him at home in his undies, you know, on the computer, working nonstop till 8, 9 o'clock at night, reading books, because he's going to interview the people, and that's why the people always say to him, "Oh, my goodness, what a great interview. You actually read my book." And Bill's like, "Yeah." He reads nonstop. He is on the phone, hundreds and hundreds of email a day, hundreds of texts, you name it. He's got it, Facebook, doing live. He is absolutely incredible. I've just never seen such a constitution and such stamina as that. So I just wanted to give you a little picture from home. And I love him dearly. Yeah. At least I didn't bring an actual picture from home.
Those dang computer cameras, right? And Linda. Thank you. And it does take... A couple, like Linda and Bill are a couple, and that support is so important, is we do our work, is who we have at home that helps and supports in all we do. I did read a humorous comment, something about Bill said his parents said, when he was getting into radio, "Why doesn't he get a real job?" And I thought, that just made me laugh. I said, "Boy, what a job he does is totally real here." Anybody else? We've got a few minutes, and if not, Bill's going to get the final rebuttal, and Linda's going to live to regret that one. Okay, so we're giving the final rebuttal to Bill.
You know, I'm going to be the first to admit that I have a very dry mouth right now, which is not something where I find myself... This is just not my usual kind of way of thinking about myself. Thank you for the honor. I'm honored and humbled by all of this, and I think all I'm going to do is just say that I will continue to work in my underwear or hopefully... Well, I do put on leather underwear one leg at a time, you know, just like everybody else here. No? Okay. Now, in all seriousness, I will continue to do my best to be worthy of the honor today and your listenership and your devotion and my devotion to you and the community, too. And I just wanted to say thank you, okay?
Just to let you know, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're welcome to. And thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Yep. The room usually clears after an award. We're used to it. Thanks for coming. So we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a request for and discussion of non-agenda items. It's a five-minute limit. Pursuant to the codified ordinances of Jackson County, Sections 213.06, members of the public may address any item not on the agenda. However, pursuant to O.R.S. 192.640, the Board of Commissioners is prohibited from discussing a principal subject that is not on the agenda today. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners will listen to your concerns and may consider the matter you raised by asking staff to follow up on any questions or by placing the matter on an agenda in the future for discussion. So nobody signed up in the auditorium, but if you would like to come and speak, come to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. If you're online, if you raise your Zoom hand, you'll be brought into the meeting as well. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Logan Vaughn of Voice in the Wilderness once again this morning. So the last time I spoke with you, I got some contact from Josh Aldridge, the captain at the jail. At that current time, our local circus DA down here still had a racket against me. They had some pending charges. Real worthless DA Wade Hillshire, you guys should probably look for a new one, finally dismissed the charges against me. So I have no more pending charges. They kept kicking down the road. So at this point, there's nothing, I believe, holding me up from going in the jail to do ministry. I know that Josh Aldridge, I actually ran into him at Costco, fortunately, the other day, and got to speak with him in person and let him know about the rapes going on in the jail and things like this, which he's aware of, and basically said he doesn't care. And I said, "Well, I want to go bring this to the attention of the Commissioners." He goes, "Oh, who are they going to believe, Logan? They going to believe you or me?" It is what it is. You guys choose to believe who you want, but the bottom line is, our ministry system in there is, at least for the men, I can say is nonexistent. The men that I do meet that have gone and do ministry in there are... I don't know who they're serving, but it's not the Jesus Christ that I serve. The Jesus Christ that I serve will help these men, and their lives can be changed. I don't understand what the hang-up is. I don't understand what it's going to take for this Captain Josh Aldridge, because I guess Nathan Sickler has relinquished the power to him to say yes or no. I tried calling him again, letting him know these charges are dismissed, what's holding me up now. I mean, this has been 10 years, folks. So let's do what we can. You know, I'm not asking for... I'll reiterate it, I'm not asking for any money. I'm just asking for the opportunity to be able to spread the good news and pray with our prisoners and our people who are... Some people in there are innocent, and they're just facing charges. There's no Bibles in there. There's not. Don't let them tell you there are Bibles. Well, there are Bibles in there, but they don't give you Bibles. I can know this from personal experience. I was standing there, and the whole... Can I have that Bible right behind you? Oh, yeah. Oh, no, never mind. It's a joke to these guys. They're evil. I don't know what else to say. You know, the fact that when I met Josh Aldridge in that Costco there, and I asked him, "Are you aware of the rapes and stuff going on?" He goes, "Yeah, but who are they going to believe, me or you?" Shame on him. Let's do something. Let's get the men some ministry. Let's get some Bibles in there. Let me pray with these men. I'm not asking for a lot. We need a new chaplain. Apparently, Daryl Wiltrow is not letting this happen. Nathan Sickler is dropping the ball. The ball is being dropped. These men need to be allowed to have the Word of God. It's their constitutional right. Back in Guantanamo Bay back during the war, we had to make sure the Muslims had their Korans and stuff like that, but we can't even make sure our own citizens have access to Bibles and people to pray with? It's wrong, and it needs to change. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else in the auditorium wish to speak? You sure can come forward, or if anybody's online, raise your Zoom hand, and we'll bring you in.
Madam Chair, I do not have anyone on Zoom with their hand raised to speak.
Okay, and nobody's coming forward. So I'm going to move on to the consent calendar. We have minutes of meetings, the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for November 19th, 2025, and the Board of Commissioners' staff meeting for November 20th, 2025.
Move approval of the consent calendar is read.
Second.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. We have a couple items for discussion and deliberation, and the We have a couple items for discussion and deliberation, and the first item is an order authorizing a provider agreement with Care Oregon Incorporated. It's order number 254-25. Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, in this case, Care Oregon Incorporated is a coordinated care organization, locally known as Jackson Care Connect, who is a subunit of company under Care Oregon Incorporated. They contract with the State of Oregon by and through the Oregon Health Authority to provide managed healthcare services to its members. This agreement will allow Jackson County to provide healthcare items and services to members of Care Oregon Incorporated and receive payment for those items and services. The term of the agreement is July 1st of 2025 through December 31st of 2025, but it will automatically renew for an additional one, for additional one-year terms unless it's terminated as provided for in the agreement. Besides providing crisis services, this contract will also allow us to provide RAP services, our ACT program, which is our sort of community treatment program that helps to support and keep chronically mentally ill people in our community, and also our Early Assessment Support Alliance with, which engages youth that are experiencing their first psychological symptoms. It is a revenue of $2,400,000 estimated, and I do recommend your approval.
Thank you.
Move approval of order number 254-25.
All second.
Any discussion? Let's take a vote.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. And our final item is an order authorizing an emergency radio services facility location agreement with Emergency Communications of Southern Oregon. It's order number 255-25. Mr. Jordan.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, in this case, Emergency Communications of Southern Oregon is going to permanently maintain and operate emergency radio equipment that they had previously installed in our Health and Human Services building parking garage. This is pursuant to a license agreement dated June 10th of 2025. This agreement replaces that license agreement in its entirety. Term of the agreement is upon execution through 50 years, and it can be terminated by the county with 120-day notice. There's no financial impact, and I do recommend your approval.
Great, thank you.
Move approval of order number 255-25.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. And that does conclude our agenda, so the meeting is adjourned.
We hope that you've enjoyed this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. If you have any questions on any part of the show, please feel free to contact your Jackson County Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information at jacksoncountyor.gov. To review the content of this or any other meeting, under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming.